All right, I'd like to call to order the Rackliff City Council work session for Monday, July 11th, 2022 at 5:00 PM at Rackliff City Hall to order. We are being streamed live on Facebook. If you will, please rise for implication or may stand up for a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all the blessings that you have given us. Father, we are so thankful for the rain over the past few days that we have had. We are thankful for all the showers of blessings that you give us. Father, we thank you for each and every council member here. We thank you for the mayor, all the department heads as they lead the city. Father, bless our service members as they're serving both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Looks like we have all the council members present. It is about 91 degrees outside, so I'm sure you guys are glad to be in here right now. And we did have, the Reds actually won a series, so they actually won a game this week. So yay. All right. So we will move on to the work session items. We have several items listed for today. The first one's going to be the Happy, the Happy Valley Walking Trail Tunnel. We spoke about this one a couple of months ago. It was in reference to, we did, David's here. We put this out for bid. The bids came back extremely higher, higher than what we anticipated. And so we closed that out. We disapproved that. And then we went back to the state. The state needs a resolution so they can put it back out for bid. And so for that, the initial budget that was set for that tunnel grant was 689,000. The new updated budget cost is going to be 800,000 for construction with 20,000 onsite inspection for a total of 820,000. So that is what the state has increased that amount to. Our 20% match goes up if that bid, if we get the bids in and the approval comes in right. Our 20% match, what goes from one, excuse me, 137,800 to around 164,000, which is about a $26,000 increase. So that is a resolution that we would be bringing to the council at the next, next week's meeting to approve that. They would like to go ahead and kind of like to get a consensus. They would like to go ahead, Albert and the state would like to, and Kim, Tomkin would like to go ahead and get this bid it out. Go ahead and get the stuff together so they can try to get the bid put together this week and get it out. So if there's any questions, David's here. I'll try to do the best I can to answer them.
Sir, along with the tunnel, what else is in that package?
Along with the tunnel, sir, what else is in that package?
So this one is just for the 31W tunnel. It goes from one side of 31 down by Centennial to the opposite side of 31. So we're basically going from the Wilson Road side over to the Centennial side, kind of in front of APR, the old calf store. And then in that tunnel, you'll have lighting, cameras. What am I missing? Gates.
Gates, okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I would say I assume our police department will shut them down just like they do.
Yeah, closing it in certain cases or not, something like that.
The cameras will be monitored at the police department?
I believe so, yep.
This would just make that one consecutive flow from one basin to the other so that people can walk, bike, do whatever. Just kind of clarification for those watching.
Yeah, and it's similar, just if anybody, I think the closest thing I know around, around our area to it is going to be down at the nature park in Elizabeth Town under Ring Road. If anyone's ever been down there and you go from the nature park over to the Freeman Lakeside, that goes under four lanes. It's, I'd say it's probably seven foot tall. I'm almost six foot myself, so yeah, you know, it's a foot. So, but I think it's about seven foot tall distance wise. All right, hearing none. We will have that, and that's just a resolution for approval. And that's just to move forward. That's not approving any kind of contract yet. That's just a line. Then they need a resolution on files. They can move forward. All right, next on the agenda is going to be the change to the policy handbook of Section 5.1 reimbursement, Section 2.5 per diem and overnight trips. That's a chance. We've talked about that at budget time. That is, we've already approved that per diem. You should have that on your, in your work documents there. You can see the strike throughs that are on there. This is what we approved at budget time. Obviously, just going with the cost of inflation, trying to meet the requirements. Some of these haven't been raised in quite a while. And so, as you can see, just to give the idea to the public, you're looking at like breakfast was at 8:50, now it's at 10. Lunch is at 10. We went to 13. And then dinner is at 16. We went to 19. So it's just trying to keep with the flow of inflation. So we already budgeted for that's in there, but we just need to make that change in the handbook to corn spa, coincide, coincide with the budget. Any questions on that? All right, next is a surplus item that's came up. In the process of looking at our equipment, we have a, this is in PW 34, which is Public Works. This is how we identify it, the 34 Alice. It's a 1997 J65. It's up on the screen. You can see it up there. It's a grater and there's a blade. So you have the two wheels in the rear, the cab, and then there's a blade underneath there, and then the long front, and then the two wheels up front. It's a 97. And basically what we use that for, we hadn't used it in several years, but back when the city was doing a lot of roadwork, when we kind of did our own blacktopping and stuff, that's what we used a grater for, was to level the concrete out, level the sides. We don't use it hardly at all. It's probably hadn't been used, I mean, yeah, a while. Ultimately, we wanted to surplus that and then use that as a trade-in on a, on the dump truck that we needed. That'll help save some money. There's been a estimated cost associated with that that we think is fair within reason of what the equipment's worth. And so the dealer's willing to take that in on trade. So.
Do we have something comparable to do with, to that, to do that type of work, or?
No, I think the, honestly, I think the guys would rather use the Bobcats to do a lot more of the grading work than they would.
Yeah.
So if there's any questions, it's just, it's something that, we were looking to, obviously ways to save some money. And this was just something that just sits that we don't utilize and takes up quite a bit of space. As you can see, it's pretty.
So this is not going to go out for bid. We're going to trade it in?
Yeah. Any questions on the surplus? All right, we'll put that on the agenda for Tuesday. Next is just our annual approval of salt. Every year, obviously, you don't need salt till you need salt. And so every year about this time, we go out for bid on the salt. We join several other cities since the change of that a few years ago where we buy municipal salt all in one big group. And so this is just an approval of moving forward with the salt. You should have a copy of that in your own's agenda.
What have we paid in previous years, Mayor? I can't remember.
I can't even remember. You know, it's been kind of all over the place. I think it's...
I'm sure it's higher. I was just curious how much.
I remember when it hit a hundred dollars, we were kind of freaking out. So I think eighty-four dollars, I think as low as if I can remember, even as I was on council, maybe in the 60s. I think here it says 130 dollars delivered. So.
Not cheap.
And these are the quotes that we get because we're part of that pool. If you're not in the pool and you don't purchase it, they don't allow you to purchase it later on, on a, on a one-off, then we have to go out and find it. If you remember one year, we, we had so much salt, we had a lot of snow and ice that year. We ended up having to go search for it. And I think we paid 150, 160 dollars a ton at that time because we couldn't find anywhere else. And we actually had to mix it with sand just to get enough to, to make it work. So. All right, we'll move that. And then last, I think we have the police chief is here. David, if you don't need anything, get ahead. Yeah, come on in, Jeffrey. Thank you, David. Come on up, Jeffrey. Probably have to turn that mic on.
Turn that switch on. There you go.
How about that?
How about that? Turn on. All the way up, right? All the way up. Just talk loud, Jeffrey.
Okay, all right. Carry on.
Good, hardy.
Okay, we have an active shooter policy that we'd like to put in play. This would be a brand new policy for us. We've had good procedures that we respond on, but we want to put this in writing as consistent with our neighbors and what basically what we responded on. Years ago before Columbine, you know, you formed a team to go into an active shooter, waited on SRT. But Columbine changed all of that. And then we've been operating on all the training that we get now is respond on your own if you have to. If there's only officers there, if there's an active shooter, you gotta go address the officer. So this policy weighs out that plan.
Hold on, he's bringing up. He's got it working. Like the battery's out on that. There.
Okay, like I was saying, years ago, prior to Columbine, there was, you know, the team concept of responding to an active shooter was how things were done. You formed a, a team to go in, three or more, four officers, whatever you needed. And then, you know, you spend time waiting maybe on a, a special response team to come and go in and address it. Columbine changed all that. We no longer wait. And the training since then has all been officer presence, that officer response, whether it's one officer or two, or how many ever it is, you go to the shooter, if there's an active shooter situation, and address it. This policy is drafted and initiated upon that thought process of responding, no matter how many officers are on the scene. So I just wanted to get this in play as soon as possible. We, you know, school's getting ready to start next month. Obviously, we'll have some, we're already training on this concept, but as in reference to this policy, we want to start getting our guys trained and get them familiar with everything that this says and how we do this. Any questions? Other than that, I think we see that with what's happened in Texas Uvalde the last couple of months. And I guess what their, the hearings and everything that they're going through right now there. So. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
You better turn it off a little. Tim will have to find batteries again. All right. And then I did see where Mark up at Public Works, Chris, said that that...
120?
120 last year. So about 10 dollars more per ton this year, or estimated. All right, so that should bring us to the end of our work session agenda. Mayor Council comments. I'll start. Chris, I'll start on your side. You should be full of excitement after your vacation last week.
I'm always full of excitement, especially since we've got some knuckleheads up there at the judge executives office. Yeah, I just want to express my displeasure with the county judge, Harry Berry, for putting the old Harden County Library building up for bid. You know, regardless of what happens in November, there's going to be six new magistrates. And we already know a new county judge, a lot of fresh ideas, a lot of new people. There's no rush on selling that. So I don't know why he chose this timing. But I would ask that the physical court and the magistrates reject the bid for the, when it comes in.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yes. Sir, you know, I had the wonderful opportunity to represent you last week in the American Legion Post 113 in Harden County. And we were awarded a golden key along with the fire department. And right now, we have 14 POWs, MIA's from the Vietnam era that represent the state of Kentucky. So it was a great thing to see a few other folks that you kind of always see around the neighborhood, around the activities. Some of them are still, you know, dealing with cancer and Agent Orange, and yet they still come out and do what they do in, in support of never forgetting and never leaving behind our veterans who are still trying to carry on. And as a matter of fact, a couple of days, actually, two days ago, we had a World War II bomber pilot, Lieutenant McGowan, second Lieutenant McGowan, had been missing for 78 years, his, his body. Although his, his parents and loved ones had a place, a burial for him, they didn't have his remains. And so he was buried in Normandy two days ago. So they were able to put him to rest. So again, that's the point of saying, you know, we have lots of veterans here and spouses and family members that are carrying on that lineage. So it's great to see that family get their piece. And then, of course, being recognized as a city that still flies both the POW and the MIA flags. Second thing, sir, we have the Christmas in July, Saturday, July 16th, sponsored by the Rackliff Women's Club. Vendors will be there from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then the dinner starts at 6:00. They have live and a silent auction that starts at 7:00. The dinner tickets are 15 dollars. And for children 10 and under, the tickets are 10 dollars. So again, that's Christmas in July, July 16th, sponsored by the Rackliff Women's Club. It will be at the Colvin Community Center.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I'll skip over you since you gave my dog away. Ms. Jackson, no, go ahead.
Don't get Lauren started either. I want to express my same sentiments that Councilman Yates expressed. I'm not quite sure I understand the urgency to sell the building at this time. So I just would like to just add that same sentiment to Councilman Yates. And also the 19th, we are having the Rackliff Small Business Alliance Tuesday at noon. Our lunch speaker will be Republican nominee for Harden County Judge Executive Keith Tall. He will be the speaker for the Rackliff Small Business Alliance luncheon at Colvin. And for this body and for the community, I've been working with Mr. Pike, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, but we are at the point of bringing the ordinance that I would like to present to this body of the no sale of cats and dogs in Rackliff that was passed by Elizabeth Town in October of 21. I would like to bring that for the next work session for discussion. And I just wanted to prepare you all for that. And if you wanted anything in advance, I'm sure Ms. Ash will be happy to send that to you. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, I just attended the DAV, DAVA State Conference, starting on the 23rd. And it was very successful, you know, because I am a spouse of veterans. I totally support them. But one good thing that came out of our meeting there, that used to be 100%, you had to be disability in order for your children to go to school, college for free. But they have changed that now to 70%. So that would give the veterans, students, an opportunity. So we were very proud to see that come through for us. And also, we are preparing for our 100 year for the auxiliary that has been on the scene with our veterans as well that will be going to Orlando, Florida in August. So, and also I'd like to thank, I, I tell you, it is something that we have the notification from the fire department. I really want to thank them again because they are truly busy. A lot is going on here in Rackliff. Don't know why. Our little town is trying to become a city. But, you know, we thank them for their, their work that they are doing, for our police that is continuing to have to come on some of the scenes, you know, as well. So we really want to thank them. We hope everyone had a safe 4th of July. Of course, I enjoyed Florida. I almost didn't want to come back, but I realized I had to return. So we are just thankful for all our citizens here in Rackliff, continue to want to be a voice for them because it's very important that they know that we are here for their concerns. We did get some calls. Councilwoman Owens as well, as far as the trash. I still don't know, coming down Wilson Road on yesterday, trash is just everywhere. So I don't know if they have been picked up. I didn't get a call back from the one that was supposed to be picked up on Friday. We were supposed, they told me personally that they would pick me up by Thursday by 6 o'clock, but they didn't get us until Friday. So I only share with them that they don't have my trash either. So let's be a little bit patient. So therefore, I don't know what the problem is. They did say that, I guess a truck had broke down. So I hope they can get their trucks fixed because we just paying a little bit more, you know, for that pickup for once a week. So we, we thank them for getting our trash finally, but we hope that they finish with the rest of the residents that are here in the city.
I think Ashley has something regarding the garbage.
Well, she kind of stole my thunder there because I was going to talk to the trash pickup as well. I think the whole south end of Rackliff, I mean, a large portion of that did not get picked up. I mean, I know my street didn't get picked up. I know Pierman didn't get picked up. Tosh's didn't get picked up. And Tosh's on that south end of Rackliff. So I did call. They promised me that they would send somebody out to my house today. I said, well, I'm actually calling on behalf of residents. They said, well, each person will have to call and, and inform us. They wouldn't even entertain a conversation with me about that. So, so for those of you who have not gotten garbage pickup, blow up their phones. But, but, but to what she just said a second ago, I mean, if the equipment's down, I know that across the nation, not just in the trash industry, but in every aspect of business, we are struggling with getting parts. We're struggling with not having enough staffing. So I think that some of those things have also impacted the trash industry. So, and I don't mean to be stealing your thunder there. But, you know, I think we all need to remember that so many aspects of our lives now are, are being impacted on the shortages in both areas. So I know we tend to want to get frustrated. I know I wanted to get frustrated because, you know, my garbage is sitting there too, right along with everybody else's. But I guess if we could just try to have a little bit of patience and know folks are working as hard and as fast as they can. And, you know, we talked about earlier in the year, there was only one other company that put in a bid on that trash, and they were double the price. So we could be paying double the price and still wind up with the same problem. So I think we need to remember that as well. And I wanted to echo on Councilman Yates's sentiments there. I do agree that maybe we could wait till we get new leadership in there before we start making decisions and, and totally cut off that whole opportunity to have that library back at that same location. So I really don't understand the urgency as well. So that's all I have today.
Speaking of ordinances, sir, or resolutions, hopefully for the next work session, we'll bring forth to everyone the proposal to make Juneteenth an official holiday for our city. So next year, since we've missed it this year, next year it will be a day of rest or day of celebration, but it'll be an official day versus just recognizing it with the proclamation. We got that part right. But now we need to go just one step farther. So hopefully between myself and Ms. Russo, we'll have it ready for the next work session. Not the next council meeting, but the next work session.
Yeah. And then we also do, and this is just for, we do the holiday schedule in December, and that sets all those, so we can add that, yeah, on there for the council. Obviously, you all get to prove.
Yes.
All right. Real quick on garbage. Ashley.
Okay.
And really, and what, I think what Councilwoman DeRoche said is, is very 100% true. It has been tough. I mean, I just got a text on my phone, we're sitting here about, they're running right now. So, you know, they typically pick up in the morning, I think at this location. And this individual, last week, they did get picked up. So they're running now. So it's been, and I, I just want to clarify before Ashley gets started. And Mr. Pike and me are going to talk after this meeting. In that contract, keep in mind that it's, a lot of people think it's one of those things where we just cut and go somewhere else. That's not necessarily the case. We have to give them 30 days to comply or fix an issue. They have to have certain steps that's taken when you do that. And then if there's a reason to break the contract, you have to have a, a valid reason. I think there's another 30-day clause in there, Mr. Pike, if I remember correctly. They have to, they have to have enough time to correct it. If the problem's not corrected, then we have to notify. When you do that, keep it in mind on top of that, we have to go out for bid because obviously we don't have our own garbage collection here. You may or may not get anyone to bid it again. Not saying that you wouldn't, but you may or may not. We're one, you know, we're one of like Vine Grove, and then I think E-Town's the only one that has multiple carriers. It's our understanding that some of those carriers in Elizabeth Town, where they have one-offs, what we call them. So we're a franchise. You know, you may be living down there and you're, you're the only one on the street that has waste management. You're not getting picked up. And it may be a while before they get picked up. So you have that issue. Obviously, we know the garbage, and Ashley and, and our staff downstairs field calls for the last several weeks, nonstop about this. A lot of anger is put onto them when it's not really their fault. But hopefully the residents will understand that it's not, the staff members can't really control that, but they're just voicing that frustration. And we get it because we, we answer the phone. So just keep it in mind with that, your rates are low. I'm not saying, you know, there's some people say, well, I'll pay 20 dollars, whatever it takes, that's what my garbage picked up. We totally get that. But again, we just can't stop the contract. And once we do, we still have to find someone to service that. So it's, it's a process. And, and we're working with waste management. We work with a regional guy. Ashley's been working with the route manager, which I'm, she's got some information. But there, I know they're trying to pick up. The ones that haven't been missed, I know yours has been a couple, but two weeks now, one on three. So, you know, we need to definitely know about those. We're not talking about the ones that are just a day or two late. We need to know the ones, I know Nalls Lane was one that we definitely had an issue with. I had a resident come see me about that. I think they did pick that one up, but I don't know if they're running behind again. So we're monitoring that as well. So Ashley, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay, all right. So when we started getting notified around the 23rd, a lot of people were not picked up on their normal day, which was Thursday, the 23rd. So on the 24th, people started blowing up the phones and saying, hey, I haven't been picked up. So we started our conversations on that date. Then we started, you know, getting behind because of the holiday, things of that nature. So they were at one point, two days behind. And then they were trying to do their regular routes and then go back. But one of the failures that happened was, you know, they have to have certain guidelines. They can only work so many hours a day because of DOT regulations, because of heat, they have to pull them off the road, you know. But mainly what happened was they had a automated loaded truck, which collects around nine homes a day, 900 homes a day, was down for, has been down for three weeks. They received their rental replacement, so things are hopefully going to even out through the week. Service failure was definitely equipment related. The rental asset was received on Saturday, and the route manager at the site said they are moving to get the areas picked up for both recycling trash. They are ensuring the service will be back by Friday and on schedule moving forward. So they sent their biggest regret. So what is happening is if you call in, the girls will take your name, your phone number, your address, your normal pickup day. They'll forward that information to me. And then as I contact them daily with, okay, what area are you doing? Where are you going to be headed? I'm contacting people back and letting them know. But I ask for your patience because not only are we fielding calls from the regular lines, they're calling cell phones, home phones. And so we're going probably, I'm getting about 80 calls a day. So because neighbors are giving phone numbers and things of that nature. And that's perfectly fine. But I just ask for your patience as I try to make my way and call. fine, but I just ask for your patience as I try to make my way in calling everybody back. I'm constantly driving the city, trying to find out areas, keep the mayor updated on what's going on, what sections they've picked up. They are picking up certain carts, and with one of the side-loading trucks that they do have, and then they're going back with another truck to pick up just the regular cans, things of that nature, just to relieve some of that trash that's out there right now. So try and bear with us, we are working with them to get resolution, you can always call City Hall, you know, ask for me, but, you know, I know many of you are in the same boat of not getting your trash picked up, so I appreciate your patience.
Ashley, one of the comments that I've heard is, and it's been more than once, I mean, it's been several comments that, being prorated, so I don't know if you can talk to that, if they, if their garbage didn't get picked up, I mean, is there any proration of the bill?
So one thing that we have worked with them on is when we put this out for bid, Councilman Yates brought it before and said if they have missed two weeks, anything over the two weeks, they will start to pro- wait. If you have been missed for three weeks, contact Waste Management, and I have heard a lot of people that, you know, they have called me back when I tell them that, they call me back and say, hey, thank you, they're going to credit me. I know that's not a whole lot of consolation, but at least, you know, but I cannot get credit for you, because that's your bill, so you have to contact them on your own, but definitely contact them, but we've been trying to get the word out to people, you know, telling people, tell your neighbors if you've been missed over this many weeks. You know, I know that the people that were missed two weeks, they're trying to get them, now some people are three weeks, so, you know, we, we give our apologies on that.
Pam, have you been picked up?
Yes.
Got picked up, did you get picked up?
We've missed just this week.
Just this week. Lauren, did you get, you got, are you on schedule? So. Okay. So I don't know how to do math on that.
It's usually our.
Sixty-six percent.
It's usually our Thursday, Friday pickups that are having a hard time, because they're trying to pick up the main part of the week, and then they're going to try to pick up, when they get done with one, you know, area, they're going to pick up their Thursday that they've missed and things of that nature, so. But again, they run into that, you can only work so many hours a day, some of the guys, they said have been coming in at two in the morning to try to get caught up now, so.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what their staffing levels are, but, you know, one guy on a truck sometimes that's hopping off, getting on, hopping off, getting on, I mean, it, it's a tough job, it's been a hundred degrees plus, I mean, it's, it's, it's rough.
In defense of the drivers, last week, they were due to pick me up Thursday morning, and the truck came along as I'm weaving out, I stopped in the driveway, he stopped and he kept watching me, and I wasn't moving, so instead of backing up into lead, which he usually does, and then comes down the rest of the way in Pierman, he came down Pierman, he got mine and the other two houses, then he backed up into lead, so, I mean, you know, they're, they're trying.
Yeah. Well, well, hopefully, like I said, I don't know how many people get to watch this, but hopefully between us and the news enterprise, maybe, I don't know, have you heard anything else, Seth, and any other, I didn't know if you'd heard anything in your reporting stuff, but hopefully it'll get, it'll get fixed by the first part next week, if not, we'll be in the same boat and go from there. Next, real quick, I just want to mention, Ashley had brought this up, last week, I think, was this Saturday?
This was Saturday.
This is a Saturday during the rain, Kimberly Ray, that of course, many of us here know, she's with Kappa Epsilon Phi fraternity, it's a sorority, sorority, excuse me, with active retirees and veterans of military, were out actually picking up, they're on Wilson and Dixie, picking up trash and stuff, so they were, they were out in the rain, doing it, they had their, their rain gear on, and I don't know if you can see the bigger picture to that, but all of them are laughing and smiling, so we appreciate them being out there. Their goal is Sisterhood, to promote self contribution and give back to improve humanity and quality of life in the communities, as well as their organization, so we just want to thank them for taking their time and going out and helping clean it up our roads, so. All right, next meeting, oh, real quick, fireworks, I know we mentioned, thank you all for coming out, I know many of you all up here were on vacation or out of town, couldn't be there, but Pam and I represented you all very well, so, and Charles was there helping out, so, but we did, we had a great time, everyone, from all accounts, I don't think we really had any issues, everybody had a great time, I know Lauren and your family just settled in very nicely out there, so we do appreciate everybody coming out, it really turned out well, look forward to next year. From what I heard, everybody, and I think you probably heard the same, everybody wanted funnel cakes, which we had somebody, but I think we didn't get somebody to come out or something, I don't remember, but everybody wanted more, they want to know where everything's at, they wanted to know where the carnival's at, I mean, we kept hearing all that, so we'll work on it next year, I mean, for next year, but thank you all for coming out and celebrating with us. Next meeting is going to be our regular scheduled council meeting, it's July nineteenth, six thirty here at Radcliffe City Hall, and so we'll put those items on there, if any questions between now and then, please just reach out to us with that.
Lauren, just a reminder that now, per our ordinance, no more fireworks until New Year's Eve.
Oh, they were shooting them last night, did you hear them last night?
Yes, at ten-thirty.
Yeah. I looked out the window.
I had to walk to home at ten forty-five PM last night to read the ordinance off my phone, because he said, prove it, and I did.
Yeah.
And I said, I'm sure, sir, you missed it, because he was a truck driver, so he's back home this weekend, I said, but you missed it.
Yeah.
And you, and you have to seize, so.
I know Chris and I had to hear it, because I heard it, and I looked out the window.
Yeah, I couldn't fall, I was so mad, I couldn't fall back asleep, but, you know, there's people out there with PTSD, there's dogs, there's several things, we're not trying to restrict your rights, well, I mean, yeah, we are, I mean, we, we want, we were trying to respect other people, and that's what you got to be, is respectful of your other neighbors, so.
All right, again, meeting's next Tuesday, July nineteenth, six thirty, so with that, we are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.